All right, so it's called a border open session. Open session, January eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Governing Board Trustee meeting is called to order at five oh two P M. Public input concerning items on closed session agenda. Called, when I'm called, members of public who have requested address the governing board regarding items that are on closed session agenda. Is there any public input concerning the item on closed session agenda? There is not, so we will return into closed session. And we're going to meet discuss the following sec- uh, item is two point one conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. One matter is identified on the agenda. Two point two conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one. One matter is identified on the agenda. Um, two point three conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Government Code Section five four nine five six one nine. D one, one matter is identified on the agenda. The board will now turn to closed session at five oh three. Policy has been stoked by you that this meeting reported by law and court policy. Any member of the public may address the board on an item on the agenda or any non agenda item. But the public must present a written request to the board. Therefore, I ask you to hand this in your speaker slips at this time to establish an efficient meeting. Speaker slips for non agenda items needs to be turned in prior to item four point two during the public regarding non agenda items. You will be recognized and called to the voting at that time with three minutes to direct the governing board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will be turned in by item five point seven. Hearing of the public regarding agenda items. If it recognized, called to the voting, or if a non agenda item comes up. We'll have three minutes to address the governing board. And in three point two, report of actions taken in closed session. The governing board met in closed session and by a vote of five to zero, the board orders to reject a claim made by minor student. And that they were reaching reach on all matters after July second, twenty twenty-two. And denied the late claim application on all claims predating July second, twenty twenty-two. And we're three point three pledge allegiance. Welcome, Governor Clark, allegiance and pledge of allegiance.
Ready again.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four, uh, this is approved of the agenda. I think what we'd like to do is move number seven point two, uh, which is the world language report. Because there are some, uh, some students there presenting on this, so we'd like to move it in front of the set agenda. So if that's okay, um, and I had a motion to approve the agenda with that, with that situation.
All the two questions. A second.
All right, and all those in favor? All right. I'll vote, go on. Motion to approve agenda is passed. And correspondence four point one, Governor Clark.
Good evening, the superintendent's office received the following correspondence regarding business on this topic. Quote, that concludes the correspondence, thank you.
Four point two, hearing of the public regarding non agenda items. I'm calling members of the public who have requested address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding non agenda items, most of them submitting speaker slip at this time. Is there any public input concerning non agenda items, first one. And we have apologized the last name is Purcell, um, to speak.
Good evening, my name is Lucy Lee Purcell, and I am a second grader at Sycamore Ridge School. Today, I am here to talk to you about the school lunch issues. First of all, many menus do not have the good nutrition that we need to grow. Second, the food tastes so bad that I do not feel like eating. Third, it's a huge waste as I see many people throw their lunch away. When I walk by the trash can, the wasted food is stacked up to my chest. Now let me explain some example menus. The first one is the mac and cheese, which includes mush broccoli, and the cheese tastes like rocket cheese. The second one is pizza, which does not really taste like pizza. To describe it, it looks like burrito with some mush vegetables in it. I feel gross when I taste it. I and my friend Reyna interviewed one forty-five people and asked, do you like the school lunch? One forty-two out of one forty-five said no, and only three said yes, sometimes. And the reason for no are mostly bad taste and bad nutrition. In the beginning, I had the school lunch. However, I and my friend Reyna threw it away every day. And we did not want to keep on doing this. So we asked our parents to make us home lunch. Now we bring home lunch. One of my favorite home lunch is fried rice. My mom cooks shrimp, sausage, eggs, and all sorts of vegetables in it, which is yummy and healthy. My mom was so excited for the free lunch, but now she wishes for the hot lunch to come back again, so she can purchase. The sliced pizza with vegetables and watermelon from the hot lunch is yummy. I suggest you to borrow some of my gifts from the hot lunch company. For example, when you make the pizza, real pizza, and without flukes like watermelon, melon, berries, and other fruits. Or bring the hot lunch back. I really hope you could consider making some of the ingredients. There has better taste and nutrition. Need help with the menus, I and my friend would love to assist. For example, we can interview people from our school again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you for your comments. It's difficult to come up here. We'll have our staff look into that for a little. Uh, number five, we're looking at seven, board recognition five point one, DMUSD employees of the month, hearing of my paper.
Congratulations to these DMUSD employees, employees of the month for the month of January. Andrea Petticord, first grade teacher, Ashley Falls School. Jenna Wolfers, third grade teacher, Kalamahar. Anna Black Hogan, school counselor, Delmar Heights. Andy Van Horn, sixth grade teacher, Delmar Hills. Anna Black Hogan, Anna Black Hogan is also the counselor at Ocean Air. Audrey Shangle, second grade teacher, Pacific Skies Blow. Jacqueline Lumer, resource specialist, Sage Canyon. Michelle Johnson, fourth grade teacher, Sycamore Ridge. Michelle Jackson, third grade teacher, Torrey Hills. And Leslie Rodriguez, administrative assistant in social services of the district classes. Please join me in congratulating these wonderful employees of the month.
Five point two, word report from the Delmar Delmar Teachers Association. President Kevin. President Ma, members of the board, the board cabinet. Uh, first, I'd like to say happy new year to everybody. Uh, this all did this start pretty bad for families. Uh, I just have a few brief common comments tonight. Uh, conservative media, I'd like to start off on a positive note. First, I'd like to voice my appreciation, the efforts made by both our administration and special education staff. Which is a positive correction after what transpired last year. It wasn't an easy time for anyone involved. But we came out the other side, working together to move forward and upward. Although we haven't reached the finish line, so we do have that point there still girls. And are moving in the right direction. I also like to recognize the effort of our administration since the beginning of this school year, trying to turn teacher voices into action. I received positive feedback from our first recording adjustments and professional development. And also the focus groups that took place at every school. Although focus groups are nothing new, small changes in the when, they were dealt and how they were conducted, but there's definitely positive about the conversations we have and hopeful change in our schools. Overall, Delmar teachers are encouraged by what we perceive as a trend and a positive correction. And we're looking forward to seeing where it may lead in twenty twenty-three. Next, your turn. And we're at five point three, order report from Delmar Schools Educational Administration with President Ma.
President Ma, congratulations. Members of the board, uh, superintendent, and thank you for so much for this opportunity to talk about what's happening. Yep, the main thing that's happening is JAGATON, we're so excited. It's here, and what's so special about JAGATON twenty twenty-three is that parents are going to be involved, so that's really great. So I have updated dates of teaching schools of interest that you can see. I mean, this is, all of this will be, you know, all of these will be done within a month. So this is the season, the JAGATON season, we're finally here. If you want to make it to any of them, of course, you're welcome, because we're happy to see what's what is. Um, just to give you an update on where we are as a foundation so far, we've raised five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars since January seventeenth, which puts us about forty-two percent of our Delmar formative goal. Um, which is pretty good considering that there was a time we didn't have a fall campaign. And all of our money really had to come from mostly from JAGATONS. So, you know, the fact that we have a fall campaign continues to put us in a good position. Um, and, uh, so we hope that we'll make up the rest right now at JAGATON. So I hope everyone's really excited and in a better place about the economy. That we might be able to raise the money that the rest of the might never try to raise. And we'll see. We have twenty-four percent founding participation rate so far, which is good. Considering again that JAGATON is when kids get really excited. Um, and they're looking forward to the running, they're looking forward to prizes, they're looking forward to opportunity drawings and, um, so I really expect that we'll get a lot more family participation, but that already twenty-four percent of all kinds of multi district already contributed this year to U S C. Yes, it's really good. And we've got up to almost a hundred thousand dollars from corporate matching and other kinds of organization dollars. So a hundred out of that five eighty-five, which will not come down themselves from our businesses contributing. So, um, pretty good so far. Hopefully, of course, we'll get the rest of the way that we can get there through JAGATON the next month. So, uh, we'll see where we are. Um, the next time I come over, of course, you're going to be fantastic, I just expect. And then I, uh, just like how I started, I mean, I just want to say that JAGATON twenty twenty-three is different than twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty. It's going to kind of be back to how it was prior to, um, uh, the outbreak of COVID. So, um, really, my friends, this is a community event because, um, community sponsors are providing prizes that the kids can earn through their fundraising and their participation, you know, through, uh, uh, different ways that kids will be able to have an opportunity to win prizes. So that's thanks to our community sponsors that are contributing to this. The teachers themselves are operating experiences at the school, so the teachers are involved. Uh, so some of the prizes will be either classroom parties or special, um, uh, they can be a state plus teacher for the day or things like that, that just, you know, show you that the teachers are really involved, that businesses in our community are involved. Parents are going to be able to, they were able to volunteer last year, so they'll still be able to volunteer alike, so they're going to be able to come to the school. So, you know, parents involved. And then our principals, of course, they have, they have sacrificed themselves in the past in many ways to really incentivize school giving. As you can see, some of these pictures, I don't know, uh, I don't know, Chris, no, not Chris. Ryan, you might not want to see this, but there are principals there working on the roof. So, uh, in different ways, the principals have also gotten really into getting in the sphere of, of this event, so. Um, all in all, we want to thank everyone, you know, teachers, parents, the kids, um, and our principals and the community for supporting and making this successful, hopefully, it really does have a JAGATON, but again, the value of it. How many is it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. We're all looking forward to JAGATON, man. Um, we are at five point four, order report from the Delmar Parent Teachers Association, uh, with the Pacific Skies School. E T A President Matthew Chen.
Uh, thank you, thank you for having me here. Um, so today, um, on behalf of our P D A's, um, uh, for the schools in the, in the districts, I'm presenting these, uh, a few things on the school clubs. So this, uh, the school clubs is providing, um, extracurricular activities and teaching, um, for the students in addition to their normal, uh, experience. Um, so what we have here, um, I hope that all of you already know that, um, so the P D A's sponsor and organize a wide range of school clubs for our students. And, um, uh, most of these are run by parent volunteers and teachers. And, uh, only maybe one exception that's a control club that's actually, um, partner with an outside parent. And, uh, and all of these are free to the families and to the students. Um, and, uh, these clubs are pretty much, you know, of course, not doing the normal school hours, but some of these actually are early in the morning before the development, for example, the running club. And, uh, some of these are through the lunchtime and, uh, some are after school. So here are the clubs, so Pacific Sky is the newest school in the district. So we don't have a whole lot this year, we're still, you know, kind of are gaining the momentum. Um, so in Pacific Sky, in Pacific Sky, we have five clubs here. First one is strong club, this, uh, our, um, it's probably the first school that has a very, you know, uh, state of the art lighting and sound systems. So the, uh, the brand would work with graduate day commitments that are the first, you know, in all the schools, uh, in this district. So this will probably be the first, uh, first club using these, uh, uh, you know, amazing technologies. Uh, so we're looking forward to that. Um, there's also art studio and Lego clubs. These are actually done by these team plus teacher, um, during lunchtime. So, and these are very popular Legos, you know, definitely all the kids love it, and the arts. We also have a math club and a management club that's the running club. And, uh, so the math club, um, uh, we have this for the fourth, sixth grade, uh, targeting the math olympiad. And we also have a team, uh, from the third grade students targeting the poetic learning, uh, math contests. The mo- uh, the running club actually, there are two sessions, one in the morning. I mentioned earlier that, uh, early in the morning, the parents can actually run with their kids and, um, get some tokens. And another session actually during lunchtime for the kids. And like this one, so Ocean Head, there's actually a lot, a lot of clubs there. I didn't even know before, uh, the president shared this to me. So they have a really, really wide variety of clubs. You can see that from, you know, the arts and music, um, or related, um, science and math and Spanish. Are, are, and sports and running, so many, many things here. So you can see some pictures here, the students, um, this is actually music movement. So this, uh, they can, you know, play music and then move at the same time. This is a running club, um, this, this sports and, uh, tournaments, and this is the major journaling here. Horror news, um, so you can see also a wide range of clubs here that's from arts, food dance, and the coming club, um, or and, um, science and running. And some pictures you can see, so you can see the dance club there. Okay, this is, uh, our, uh, parents will be, you can see the dance teacher here, this is all from outside. It's actually a parent volunteer, uh, leading their club. And like this one also, this is a machiforce, not a lot of clubs here, but the, but you know, the governing club. Uh, it's like they actually like having a, a, a local farm in the school. So we can see, you know, they actually grow all kinds of vegetables, and we can begin to all kinds of healthy lunches. So this could be the choices for either the school lunch, um, or. And this is actually a lot more, so I don't have time to go over, you know, every school, but, uh, you know, you basically get the idea. And, uh, one takes up close to Delmar Heights because of the lack of, uh, the campus, so they don't have a whole lot. They still have the running club, so that is, uh, to get the students, you know, get the happy spirits. And, um, uh, so you can see, you know, all the other, um, or the, uh, activities that are going on in these schools. So lastly, what I want to say is I want to give the, the great thank you to all the volunteers, the parent volunteers and teachers volunteers as well. Without them, this would not be awesome, actually. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you to all the parent volunteers that helped make the school so enriching for the students. Uh, we are at board reports with the governing board members tonight. We'll go down the line, you're with me.
Everybody had a great holiday. I don't have any reports this month. I had a, a lot with Eric, we met with, uh, Colin from the town, uh, who is going to spearhead the strategic plan for the district. I, I looked up that Zoom call, uh, very positive, going forward to our strategic plan once again. This is everyone that I've been through. Um, and it's amazing to see a strategic plan come into place, come to fruition, and then it becomes time to start a new. And, uh, it's, it's, I encourage everybody to get involved. It's a important thing for the community to help us steer the district in a way that benefits the audience. Um, and, uh, I'm happy also to say that we have a kitchen just after your introduction. We just built a kitchen and, um, so we're going to start transitioning to different kinds of lunches. We have somebody in place that's, uh, manning that post about how to transition that. And certainly Lucy, um, and, and all your friends, I would encourage them to speak up and tell us what you want. Because that, that pizza mush does not serve.
Uh, thanks, Doug, for bringing up the town for kids, because, uh, we, uh, these are audience, but we have a strategic planning in our agenda. So I'm glad that you mentioned that it's going to be a way of a process that includes all parents, community members, anybody who wants to be involved. So I'll also put a plug and also look out for the dates and hopefully, all the, all the time in your busy calendar has been the day to, uh, to provide a part of that process. So, um, stick around if you want to hear the details, but there will also be more information for, I'm excited about that. That's it for me, it's been a really long break.
Good evening, everyone, it's so nice to see, uh, students here with us today, and I'm excited to hear your reports. Um, happy new year to everyone. And, um, just briefly, um, in addition to, I think last month I mentioned learning about a partnership with UCSD, which could help us with, um, conducting staff surveys. I also learned about, um, in addition to California Health and Kids Survey, there is a, uh, we have these, um, California school staff surveys. I thought that was interesting, so I'll share that on there too.
Thank you, I, I don't have a whole lot this month, uh, so I'm, I'm excited for the kids to get up here and share too. So I'll, and then happy new year, uh, Lunar New Years of those that celebrated and started this, uh, this weekend. Very much, and we move on to, uh, five point six, which is report number ten.
Great, thank you. Um, it's been wonderful again to meet with the M C F, have conversations with the M C T A, and also our chief presidents, who make it all of those, those who are doing good work on the path of our kids. And the last meeting, we had a chance to introduce our new director of Child Nutrition Services, Jamie Phillips. So it's exciting to have a kid and a Jamie. So he will be working alongside our kids, he's already been out about some of the schools and asking questions, so, um, so now we know where to appoint him when he gets to Sycamore Ridge, that's for sure. We're excited about that. And I would like to introduce now Chris Delanti, who's going to introduce us to our new director of physical services. One of our, our, uh, our former director of physical services, has just very recently, as of today, started this new position as new superintendent, uh, physical services in the district in Salt Beach. And so we're deciding that our very own, um, director, Tiana, is going to enter that role soon.
Thank you very much, all. Yes, this evening, I'm very excited and proud to be able to introduce Tiana Part, who is currently our director of Business Support Services. Tiana has been an integral part in our business department over the last number of years, and supporting not only the business support services within this year, uh, with our initial transition from having no universal meals and serving, uh, fifteen thousand meals in a month to serving fifteen thousand meals a day. And so we have further transition that we're doing that Dr. Clark alluded to, but Tiana has, has just grown leaps and bounds as she's been a part of the district. She's taken on more and more responsibility, and she's worked very closely with Mark and myself with budgeting and the work that, uh, Mark has been a boss member of years, and so we are in very good hands, and I'm very excited to introduce Tiana Part.
Thank you, Chris. President Ma, Governor McClark, and members of the board, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve these wonderful students and our community. Thank you.
And the last part of my report is actually our students' booklet for this month. We have students here from Delmar Hills Academy, and I think some teachers. So Mrs. Lee, are you ready to come on up? And tell us what we've got in store for us. And I'd like to invite our students to come on up too. Are you ready?
Right now, it is a little after sixteen, which, uh, there is an item on the agenda that's time certain. So we have to move to, uh, number ten. Um, so apologies to the world language students that were, that we, but we're going to go to the duty audit, uh, first on point one. Uh, so point one, we are, uh, doing the board review and acceptance of the annual and measured and bond fund audit reports for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, verified as a campaign.
Good evening, Governor Ma, here's the board, Governor Clark. I'd like to introduce Kevin Sproul, who is one of the partners of the board's identity, and he'll be, uh, sharing the audit reports. Thank you, Ma.
You know, when it's time sensitive, I, I like it when you have a budget right before me, it's not adorable children. Makes my section even drier than our kids. Uh, thank you so much for having me, members of the board. Um, I, I presented here before, and so I just really like to give an overview of what the audit report, uh, pieces kind of contain, how it flows, uh, I'll talk about the financials a little bit, but I'm not going to dwell on the financials. And then, um, once I'm done, I will go to the questions, so, uh, I'm just going to get ready to. Um, the audit report starts with the opinion letter, uh, which is the very first set of pages after the table of contents. Uh, Delmar had a unmodified, modified opinion, that is what you want to see. Following the opinion letter is the management discussion and analysis. This is an unaudited portion of the report, and is prepared by, uh, the management of the district. Uh, following that are two different sets of financials. There's a government-wide financial statement. And what that means is there's a set of conversion entries that we do, uh, along with the district in order to move from a modified accrual to a full accrual, where the assets, the debt, everything is on the books. And so there are two sets of financial statements right out there. Government-wide, which have all of those pieces in them, and then just the governmental, which is the modified accrual, which you operate on all the way around. So following that, this is the exciting part of the audit notes. The thing I always like to say is anyone in the trouble sleeping, put the units on the side, put this next to your bed, and you'll be right out. The purpose of the notes, though, is to kind of facilitate a reader in the important accounting policies the district has. And then also those individual lines on the balance sheet, like, uh, accounts receivable or capital, so if you can go into the notes to the financial statements, and you can see a little bit more of the drill down of the details of what makes up those accounts. So if you're curious, that's, that's where you want to go, is the notes. Following the notes are. Following the notes are some required supplementary information and some combining schedules. These are pieces of, these are schedules that are required to give the audit report. And many of them are multi-year schedules that continue year after year. Even the pension liability, building in OPEB, so another page turn here. After the combining statements are the supplementary information pieces. And that includes your report composition, scheduled EBA, scheduled instructional time. And then this is actually the schedule that I like the most in the audit report when it comes to the physical health of the district. Is on page one hundred, it's the scheduled financial trends and analysis. The reason I like it is because it gives a several-year kind of bird's eye snapshot of the revenues, the expenses, where the EBA has been. And so you can kind of see, like it says, trends, you know, not coming down and some ratios that go along with that. So this is the schedule that I like to kind of look at to see that. And on this schedule, just a couple things, that third line, that changes come downs. You notice that's a positive each year, so that means that you've got more revenue than you spent. Good job. Keep it up. And then you've also kept your available reserves very healthy, about twenty percent, which is great. But like I said, I like looking at this schedule, kind of just snapshot how are people doing. Now, the thing that all boards always want to know is right after the supplemental schedules are the letters. The government auditing standards letter, the federal compliance letter, and the state compliance letter. And all three of those are summarized on the schedule of the audit results on page one hundred and fourteen. The first part of that is the financial statements. And that's the first letter, we said was an unmodified modified opinion. And there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or non-compliance that we have in the financial statements. One for one. The next part is the federal boards. This identifies the major programs that we tested as part of the C plus audit. And then also says that the opinion on those major programs was also unmodified. Great job. And then finishes on page one fifteen with the state compliance. Once again, the opinion was unmodified with no material weaknesses and deficiencies or non-compliance. And you can see on page one sixteen, that's the scheduled findings and question costs. It's always nice when we are able to put none in all three panels. So that is overarching view of the audit report. So if anyone has any questions, I'll go for that.
Thank you for that, everybody, in order to support. If you have any questions.
Um, thank you. Yes. I have a question about page ninety-nine. Okay, so the first grade level is transitional kindergarten. It says annual requirements that is offered. And we comply. Can you just explain that line first?
So this, the first, the schedule that she's referring to is the scheduled instructional time. And you can see down in the first note, note one, those are the requirements of the annual instructional minutes that each of those grade levels have. So for TK in kindergarten, the annual requirement is thirty-six thousand. For grades first through three, it's fifty thousand four hundred. Then grades four through six, it's fifty-four thousand. And so that means that the instructional time at a district school with the least amount of instructional minutes based on the bell schedules is what we would put in as actual minutes offered. And so for each of these grade levels, we look through the district population on all the schools and all the bell schedules. And we pick, and you can see everyone operated under the same general bell schedule, so maybe easy. But we pick the lowest per grade. So because sometimes we see that one grade might have one hundred less minutes at one elementary school versus another based on what a principal went to. And that is the grade that we put up here. And so as long as the actual minutes offered is greater than or equal to the annual minutes requirement, then for the minutes, the district has complied. And then the second part of that is the number of days. And so a district in California is required to operate at least one hundred and eighty days unless they fill out an emergency waiver. And so we're able to also say that you operated one hundred and eighty days and complied.
I have one more question. Do we all offer transitional kindergarten here? So how do we?
Well, there's the universal transitional kindergarten program that has been started in the twenty-one, twenty-two for funding and going forward into the future.
I don't know if I agree with that.
But it's not compulsory, look, that's the difference. It's not compulsory or in the institution. So that's the difference. I would very much agree.
She is asking, why is it in there? It's that line she struck out because we don't have.
I think so.
Or institutions.
Nothing's fine. If we were to offer, we would have that.
Anything additional? All right. Is there a motion to approve the annual and measuring and bond fund audit reports for the 2021, 22 fiscal year?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Although the papers.
Hi.
Hi.
Is there a way that that should be? Remote?
Yes.
Before?
I mean, not before you vote right second, but there is, you can't rely on the audit report to provide that information.
So, okay, so we have five and no names. So the motion to approve the audit reports for 2021, 22 fiscal year passed. And thank you very much. Now, now we can move on to 7.2, 7.3. I've ordered for the world language program.
Good evening, President Mark and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening to be able to provide an overview of our world language programs. I'll begin this evening by just sharing a very high-level brief overview of the program offerings. And now I'm going to turn it over to our wonderful teachers who are here representing their various programs. We have Willy Camacho, our sixth grade Spanish teacher. We have Liz Loza, our first grade Spanish immersion teacher. And Elizabeth Cisneros, our second grade Spanish immersion teacher. And Elizabeth has the VIPs at home interviews a little bit later, so we'll open and check them. We're very pleased for our district to be able to offer three different avenues for how our students can explore language. The first is the Spanish immersion program. And many of our students who might have seen tonight, I don't know if you still want to sleep out. I think that has yours, many of my parents out there, really very excited. We offer six classes in grades kindergarten through second grade at two school sites, Delmar Hills and Ashley Falls. And we will be expanding up to third grade next year. In addition to that, we offer a foreign language and elementary school experience, which is really a robust language offering for all of our sixth grade students across all school sites. And those students receive Spanish instruction twice per week. And then we also offer a foreign language elementary class opportunity. We offer that in two ways. One being for our STEAM plus programming. We now have two teachers offering evidence, really a language exploration opportunity to experience the joy of learning and understanding the cultures across four of our school sites. From kindergarten to second grade and in some cases kindergarten, third grade and different sites. In addition to that, we offer an after-school offering, which is a P-based program that's offered through programs for students. We're very proud to have a very engaged world language advisory committee. In fact, some of our members up here last this evening. This, this committee is comprised of teachers, parents, principals, and members of our instructional services team who come together three times during the year to provide feedback on areas in which we are growing as a program. Some of those areas include developing the skill and sequence of learning for our programs, our assessment and recording documents, and program communication. We've been very busy as a committee, as you can see, over the past two years. This committee has developed the skill and sequence for our entire Spanish immersion program, kindergarten to second grade, and we're working on third currently. Also, our skill and sequence for our sixth grade Spanish program. Additionally, we've developed our Spanish language arts report card addendum for parents when they come through the reporting period, kindergarten through sixth grade. So that's built out for the program right now. In addition to that, we have supported our teachers with understanding why we assess and how we assess through our assessment matrix that is developed through second grade and again currently working on the third grade iteration. And for our sixth grade Spanish program, we also have a portrait of a sixth grade Spanish student that was developed with the committee last year that really supports our parents in the sixth grade program and understanding what are the skills that students will learn? What do they look like when they come out of that year? What are the expectations? And this year, we're really excited. Willy might touch upon this. But our students are developing a student A portfolio and collecting artifacts of their learning as they go throughout and understanding how to create portfolios that represent their learning to share with their families over the years. So with that, I'm going to turn over the beginning of the sixth grade program.
Thank you, Sarah. And hello, good evening to everybody. Thank you, all board members. And Dr. McClaren, I'm happy to be up here tonight. So I'm just going to start by saying how proud I am of our Spanish programs in this district. Some of our highlights that I'm going to share tonight are from the sixth grade Spanish plus program and from this C plus program. This program, as you may, is valuable and a great study tool for our sixth grade students as we prepare them for their next steps into middle school. As you can see up here, we have some objectives for our program. And the main focus is on our exploration of the Spanish and Latin American cultures, oftentimes through music, project-based learning, and real-world connections. Another important objective is to promote and build our students' global awareness and create global learners to celebrate diversity. Lastly, our program also has students communicating by reading, writing, and speaking in the target language. As you can see up here, I've put together some pictures of some different activities that helped the students explore the diverse cultures that we explore in our program. In the top left, you can see towards the beginning of the year, students explore the Spanish-speaking world and are able to choose a country of their choice to do a presentation for their peers in class. All the way to the right, many of you guys have seen this around our campuses. Dia de los Marcos is another opportunity, not for just our sixth graders, but our whole school communities to explore the diverse cultures in Latin America. And then this year, we had an extra special opportunity. If anybody watched La Comodidad, anybody? So as soon as that takes place, this brings us also to their Spanish classes. We got to explore the four Spanish-speaking countries that were part of the World Cup this year. We're excited for that as well. And then lastly, you can see at the bottom, there is a salt dome map. So we, I worked with the different art teachers to create salt dome maps of South America. So many of you guys know that we've dived into a book about a capybara named Carlos. And we get to explore South America and things on rainforest as well. Another important piece of our program is the global awareness and creating global learners. And we watch a documentary in the first term called Living on a Dollar. And students follow, college students that travel down to a rural town in Guatemala. And they're exposed to what it's like living in a town full of poverty and what it means to live like that, how we're connected to people in all different walks of life. And we explored also social injustices through the documentary as well. Students are also constantly comparing their own lives to those around them and explore the both the similarities and differences, and we're able to celebrate those. And then always the right, you can see once again, the capybara coboldas, we explore themes such as deforestation of the Amazon rainforest, the water cycle, and our role in the community. And then this year, we have a new project. We're partnering with the San Diego County Office of Education and the embassy of Spain. And this is a program that's called Dos Odeas, which means Two Shores. So myself and the two other Spanish teachers in the district have been partnered up with Spanish teachers in Spain. And we will be working with them to design and implement an exchange project between ourselves and their students throughout this term. And then in May, we'll have a final celebration of what we accomplished and the global collaboration between our schools and the schools in Spain. I'm going to switch gears over to the C plus program. As Sarah mentioned, these are, this C plus Spanish program is operated at four of our sites this year, either G two or G three at Ocean Air Del Mar Hills, CDM, and Sycamore Ridge. And they see their C plus Spanish teachers once a week. The objectives for this program strive to build confidence in our students by practicing Spanish conversation for students to develop an understanding and appreciation of the various Spanish-speaking cultures. In the, in the pictures, you guys can see the focus of the program is arte música y coles. So the base of the program uses art and music and games to support students with building confidence in learning a new language and gaining appreciation for the culture of the Spanish-speaking world. I am now going to pass it over to the very talented Ms. Loza, who's coming up and talking about this program. And this is that, the Spanish teacher from first grade at Del Mar Hills. You're so proud to have the Spanish language immersion program built up to kindergarten through second grade. And we're so excited to open up their grade next year with some great additions. The found, there are three foundational pillars in the Spanish immersion program. High academic achievement, bilingualism and literacy, and social cultural competence. To support the pillar of high academic achievement, students are learning about math, reading, science, and Spanish. In math, students are reading problems, developing their mathematical thinking, and documenting their reasoning, all in Spanish. Toward the left side of, of the slide, you can see all of the work that they are doing with all of the word problems in Spanish. And they do need to figure out what they are saying and how to solve them and. First grade students worked on an opinion piece independently in writing, while second graders collaborated to give each other specific positive feedback to support their peers in the writing process for their afterward writing. They all got to give each other a little bit of feedback and then improve that writing piece. Students in this program are working toward becoming bilingual and bilingual through writing, synthesizing what they are reading, and delving deeper into conversations about what they are reading through the use of invisible thinking routines. Here is a second grade student building on what she learned in kindergarten and first grade to read a second grade passage, please. Cuando la gente puede correr, yo todo entrecierra y los ojos pueden ver. El velaje del judío tiene dos partes. La de arriba es formada por de los únicos. La de arriba por de los largos. En cambio, que el agua toca en su cuerpo. Luciana funciona como un increíble abrigador. We can see that they are developing all of the skills that they've developed in English, grammar, and Spanish. Their self-acting, they're using those three skills. And they have grown a long way from what they started with us in the first. I will pass over the presentation to the next.
I hope for a good evening, everybody. And you guys will be just middle students, and every grade's a better teacher. Going on to the board. So to support the social cultural pillar in December, our students shared about celebrations around the world, which included Hanukkah, Diwali, Kwanzaa, and Christmas. These are some samples of many of our first graders write in Spanish to learn about these holiday things. In second grade, our students also learn about celebrations in Latin America such as Pocahontas that typically include a piñata. So the students collaborate with the helping, very volunteer, construct their own piñata. The only difference here is that their piñata would not require a stick to, not a part of a stick, but rather a string to pull the piñata apart. Down, but. Right, very hard. There's a lot of experience. He tried to make it equitable and... We have to go back to the drawing room to say that. Now, let me give you a quick peek inside into our second grade classroom. My second grade students read about simile-y standard group adjectives. With these things, they created beautiful poems you see here, which I translated for you in English for you to enjoy. So now I'm going to call my first student Wesley. My friend would read his poem in Spanish. If you guys want to follow along, I have that poem up here for you. And now I'm going to call up Amber.
Thank you. Now, with that presentation, we're very happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful.
Just a comment, thank you. It's so exciting because we have this program has evolved. We've been talking about it for so many years and to see it kind of really bloom. There's been a lot of teachers and families who have really brought us to life. We really are very appreciative and excited to see where we go from here.
Thanks.
Yeah, I so enjoyed my daughter's senior season of this class, and I just love that. It was amazing. She brought her all her own version. So thank you for doing it, because I have a couple of questions. Well, the first is for the sixth grade plus, the Dos Odeas. Are they going to be able to meet? It sounds kind of like pen pals. Are they going to be able to help us do a meeting? I think we said in May, there'd be some kind of culmination.
Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to go across the seas to meet each other. That would be a deal. I'm on board for that. But we are going to be using Flipgrid as our tool so that they can be posting videos and communicating with each other through that. So we'll be face-to-face as close as they can without probably across the country. I know, even when they raise them.
And then I have a question regarding our flex program and STEAM. So right now, we have Spanish, and I'm assuming that the children are with the Spanish. Is it a rotation, like they have a music rotation and Spanish rotations? Have we given any classes incorporating more languages into the flex programs?
Thank you. It's a wonderful suggestion and certainly something we can incorporate into. As to what the input might be.
Maybe something they incorporate more in our strategic plan.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for mentioning that. That reminds me, first of all, we had a survey early on about what language people were interested in. It's been a runaway favorite. There's almost no interest in other language, which definitely revisited. It didn't seem like there was a lot of appetite for it. And so then as far as the flex program, the other ready program, I know that there are staff right now, fourth and fifth grade will get Spanish instruction within sixth grade. What's the plan for next year to expand that?
That's a great question. I don't know if we necessarily have a plan yet. It's really going to be developed again through the strategic process and through the feedback we gather. At this point, the thinking is that our students in fourth and fifth grade have, and in some cases, third as well, on campuses where that's Spanish goes to second grade, have opportunities for more advanced sciences. And so this is all great data and it's a placement, if that makes sense.
I just want to say thank you all for... I mean, it's been a long time since I've smiled from the beginning of the meeting. And I would encourage you, if we could do it every month and have a bilingual poetry meeting. That would be a great job. I know it's not easy to stand in front of a group and speak, and I commend you all for doing that. You did a great job during the class.
Absolutely. That's so very wonderful. I love what's happening with this program. I think it's wonderful. I have exposure to other cultures of the languages, and it's great to see it in action. And you can see that I've improved and that's forward. I did have a quick question about academics-wise. Have you been able, because we have some, I don't know, I guess, since it's now second grade, do we have any interest academic-wise, how it compares to regular classes? Like, do we have like a score or anything like that?
Well, that is exactly why we've developed our assessment matrix that allows us to be able to assess certain areas within contexts in Spanish and some in English. And so essentially, what's happening is principals look at that data, teachers will look at the data every day, and we really try. So we both have informative practices where we're collecting informative data, assessing data every day, and the classroom, we have more formal assessments which we're taking over that and supporting students' needs and their development. So that's really an ongoing process, and indeed, it's happening.
Do you have any, at some point, some sort of key word data that I can kind of compare size that you might be able to see? I'm just kind of curious to see what the, if it's on par with the regular classes or is there some kind of difference at all?
Direct that question, Sean, because I think at this point, that's going to be hard to measure until our students are taking the small analysis assessment. But Shelley, do you have anything else to add?
So our students are measured according to the literacy and mathematics development skills in Spanish as we would expect in English. So yes, those measurements are taking place and are based on those assessments and how students perform. Support is provided as needed. It's when we get into third grade and they begin taking the California, the smarter balanced assessment, we will see what that performance looks like in English. Typically, we see a dip in English just because that hasn't been their focus. But that gap closes by the time they're in the fourth or fifth grade. And we see those scores, typically, the data and the research bears out that those scores are commensurate or higher for those students who have been studying in two languages. So those English skills come right along with the Spanish skills. And remember, we begin to shift that percentage as the grade levels increase. So by the time the students are in fourth grade, they're getting mathematics and English, and the Spanish language instruction takes place in social studies and science.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah.
And still language arts as well.
Yeah, just if I was able to see at some point when it starts coming out. And because I suspect it's going to be, I know there's a little bit of dip, but I think, because for me, it's like the program's like an over here. It's like everyone should have more exposure to more stuff, and you get a whole other language or culture filter, and it's like, I suspect it's not going to be a huge amount of difference in the scores.
We're very excited about that as well. And so next year, when we report on the spring 2023 scores, we'll be able to disaggregate that data and chart out.
Fantastic. Thank you. We'll order that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Sarah. I think we now jump back to the consent agenda. Is that high points now? We have that one set that is something. Okay. So we're back on set of public input concerning items on the agenda for anyone who would like to address the meeting or the six letter agenda. Your speakers will move your hands at this time. You will be recognized and called upon when you're requested. The agenda item comes up in about three minutes addressing a report. Five point eight for approval minutes. Is there a motion approved of minutes for December 14? Point one two.
Almost a third minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved minutes for December 14, point one two, meaning passes. But when I, public hearing board information approval, close of public hearing for the submission of the initial proposals for the reopens of the 2022, 2023 in the state DMCJ labor agreement. Government Code Article Eight, Section 3547 stipulates that a reasonable time elapsed after the submission of the initial proposal for the public to have the great opportunity to comment. Public hearing was opened at the December 14, 2022. Government Board Justice Meeting will be closed at this January 18, 2023. Government Board Justice Meeting. Government Government Code Article Eight, Section 3547 stipulates that a reasonable time elapsed after submission of the initial proposal for the public to have in common, or during the public comments. There's been, is there a motion to approve the closing of the public hearing for the submission of the initial proposals for the reopens of the 2022, 2023? DMCJ labor agreement.
Almost closing, right?
It's the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion approved the closing of the hearing for submission of the initial proposal for the reopens of the 2022, 2023? DMCJ labor agreement passes. Public hearing is closed at 6:54 PM. Now, we're going to be on the consent agenda, 6.1, 6.2 consent papers. Is there any questions regarding the consent?
Yes, I discussed this in workup with Dr. Clark. Item 6.11, the travel to Harvard Graduate School Project Center classroom for the attendance at that conference. I think for me personally, I haven't yet seen, you know, this is my second term on the board. I've never seen a travel budget, an annual travel budget. And I think that that's really important in order for me to give consent to this item. I first need to see what our annual travel budget is. And I think our board needs to approve an annual travel budget.
Chris, do you want to talk about how the budget works with travel annually?
Absolutely. So we budget for each department. Each department has budgets based on professional learning. And so this would fall into not just travel, this would actually fall into professional learning. And so each department has a budget for that each year because it's really our number one priority when we come to the instructional program, being the top priority of the district. So we do have that budgeted in into each department. Some of it also comes with the one-time funds that we've received. So when we look at the Learning Recovery Block Grant, part of this would actually come from, this one would actually come from that budget. So there are a number of places that it comes from. I think that when we, from the budgeting perspective, and we have prioritized it on an annual basis because it really supports the instructional program and the learning we do. So all the progress we've made over the course of District 9, 2022, there is a whole lot of that that stems from professional learning that comes in for our staff and then supports the learning for our students.
So which department does this fall under?
This would be in the instructional services. And again, this one in particular, we'd be looking at budgeting through the Learning Recovery Block Grant, which has one-time funds to use for professional learning for staff.
I don't know if you guys have any opinions on this. I'd like to hear if you have any thoughts on annual travel budgets.
Do you have a particular concern about the budget?
I would like to see how much we're, our district is spending on attending conferences and hotel fees and all those things that are associated with the cost of attending conferences.
Do you have a concern that it might be too high or?
Well, I just think it's important to have transparency to know as we have so many other items that are delineated as to how much we're spending on them. I'd like to see totals. Kind of our responsibility here is to see how much we're spending on things. And I'd like to have a bigger picture as to how much we're spending on attending conferences and associated costs of those conferences, traveling to them.
So you're suggesting I just want like a total tally? Because I do include it on the items that are on the consent agenda at the time. And so we're able, we are able to see the dollar amount that's associated with. I mean, I suppose on this one, it might be interesting as to like how many people are going.
No, that was another question I asked.
Aside from, because like I've been saying, like if it's a total tally, then that's something that has been, each month is kind of listed there. So are you asking for like a full, like a yearly count?
Yeah, I would like to know if it's something that the board has interesting, setting a budget for my department or in total for our conferences and travel and associated costs.
Do you want them to, do you want them to break it out in the next budget of some, you know, on professional development, or is that what you're asking for?
It doesn't seem like there is a budget. It just kind of seems like it's, you know,
Well, we approve all, you know, when these conferences we do, it comes up for our approval, so.
Yes, I agree with that.
And there's a dollar amount that's attached to that. And so you want to see it at the end of the...
I want to know that, so let's say we have, you know, X dollar to spend on supplies. What is our dollar amount that we're spending on this particular item?
I like your idea, Scott. I was just incorporating it as, you know, in more detail in the next budget just to show the breakdown. I'm sure it's all in the budget, it's not a breakdown.
Yeah, they have to pull it out of the unit. It's categorized. They can be pulled out pretty easily.
There's also the issue of one-time money versus general fund money. And it becomes, one-time money is to be spent on professional development, can't be spent on buying other things. So there would have to be two budgets, I guess. One for one-time money for professional development and a budget for the general fund for non-one-time money issues. So, I mean, you know, as much as I'm going to control the budget, I don't want to micromanage the budget either. And I understand what you're saying, but I also understand that it's listed and it, you know, I don't want to stifle it from happening because professional development is an important aspect of why we are who we are. I don't know that budgeting would do that, but I just think that at some point, you get down to weeds and it becomes almost a micromanaging task, especially when it comes out to the pockets. Shelley's nodding her head.
This is a conference that we have budgeted for year after year, and for the last three years, we have not been able to attend. And so this figure may look higher. And in fact, the budget for this conference was shared in the one-time money. Was it the Recovery Block Grant?
Learning Recovery Block Grant.
Learning Recovery Block Grant. And we just had to push the dollars forward because this is the first year since 2019 they've been able to offer this conference. So for this one in particular, people are attending because we have to roll that attendance forward. So just to shed a little light on this particular conference. But we do budget. We identify and budget for conferences each year within our department budgets as well as other departments through the district.
May I ask, so it's $57,000 to attend this conference. How many staff members are able to attend? Or will be attending?
I think for this particular conference, I think it's seven. I would have to double check my count, but I think seven individuals will be attending.
I guess my concern is we have an issue funding transitional kindergarten, and we are attending conferences that neighboring school districts who receive less dollars than we do, do not attend these types of conferences for lack of funds. So I take issue with that. And again, I would like to see an overall total picture of all the conferences that we're attending and the associated costs and the amount of people that are attending. So kind of a breakdown, what is costing per person to attend the conference? Not including the conferences that we attend. Not including the conferences that we attend.
Would it be, would it be good if, say, a future board may be named, probably when they go through budgeting, that they just list the offices that attended with total accounts, so that gave you the information you need?
By department as well, if you were to attach that to them.
And whether it was one-time funds or, you know, used by one-time funds or general funds, so then that is the, you know, a total.
That would work.
Okay, we can, we can probably do that.
Is that something I can be prompted, Chris, maybe? Anything?
Yeah, I'll, I'm taking some notes and I'll work it out and bring things up.
Is there anything further? Then I will ask, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Item six point one, six point two, one, six, one, two.
I'll move to approve the consent.
Is there? And all those in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion approved, the consent agenda passes. And we get it now at seven curriculum and instruction. Six point one, Board Report, California School Dashboard.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to share with you the California School Dashboard results for your board meeting for two of last month's agenda items. I'm going to need to figure out a way to include students in this presentation. Go next, sir. All right. This graphic is shared with you last month, as our reminder will be focused on state indicators. Of the sixty indicators four applied to elementary school districts, they include academic indicators for English language arts and math, English learner projects, product absenteeism, and suspension rates. In a typical year, performance levels are determined by comparing two years of data for all students and student groups that are thirty or more. The status is the current year's performance. The change is determined once there is a second year of data. The status from the first year and the change from that status determined by the second year data are plotted on a five-by-five grid to establish a color for the indicator. Because the dashboard is restarting this year, only status is being reported. So the five status levels will be represented by these purple, I call them self-embarked graphics. We're going to be first looking at academic performance levels for English Language Arts and Mathematics. Performance levels are based on how students performed on the Smarter Balance assessments, where there are four performance levels. When the students score a level three on the Smarter Balance assessment, they are determined to have the met expectations for that grade level. The academic indicator for the dashboard is based on an aggregate, aggregate for average of each student's distance from the lowest level of three. In this example, the standard score range for level three for fifth grade in English Language Arts is a range of two thousand five hundred two to two thousand five hundred eighty-one. This particular student scored two thousand five hundred forty-five, which is forty-three points above the lowest level of three. The calculation is done for every student in the district for English Language Arts, in this case, and also it's also done mathematics, and is used to determine the average distance from three for all of the students. And then that determines the status for the district. These are the performance ranges for English Language Arts, which is communicated as points above or below the lowest level of three. Our students score eighty-five point six points above standard, which is at the very high level. This slide shows all student groups of thirty or more. All groups performed at the high level or very high level in English Language Arts. These are the performance levels for math, where our students in DMSD also perform at the very high level. Five points above standard. This slide shows the performance level for each of our student groups in the area of mathematics. All but one student group performed at a high or very high level. There were two hundred and four students in the socio-economically disadvantaged student group that took the Smarter Balance assessments on the last year mathematics. Of those, eighty-eight of the students were not considered to be proficient. Forty of those students were also identified as current English learners. The mathematics Smarter Balance assessment is language intensive, and so can be challenging for students that are new to English. You might wonder why we have English learner in the high, very high group, if that is the case. The English learners in the very high group also include our English learners that have been reclassified within the last four years. So so it includes both current English learners and students that were English learners. In the area of mathematics, we know that students new to the district have sometimes find it a challenge when they have been accustomed to more, a more formulaic approach to instruction, rather than a conceptually based program that we have within our district. The area of focus for our mathematics process has been to provide teachers with strategies to help bridge that gap and provide needed intervention. We are very fortunate in this district in that the number of students not meeting grade level expectation is relatively small. This means that rather than having a blank goal for improvement, we are able to customize the support that students receive based on their individual assessed need. English learners can be supported with vocabulary necessary to be successful in mathematics. Students new to our district can be assisted in growing mathematical understanding and problem-solving skills as examples. We're going to shift now to chronic absenteeism. The state has determined that a student is chronically absent when they have been absent ten percent or more of the instructional days that they have been enrolled. For example, if a student has been enrolled for the full one hundred eighty days in a school year, they are considered to be chronically absent if they miss eighteen days of school. This is regardless of the reason that they were absent. There, these are the performance levels for the chronic absenteeism indicator, as opposed to the academic indicator, where high or very high is the goal. In this case, low or very low is the goal, and we want a low absenteeism level. This slide includes both the all student performance level, which was medium, and also the performance levels for the student groups. You will see that we have student groups listed here that were not listed for the academic indicators. This is because it includes all students kindergarten through sixth grade, where in the academic indicators, it only includes students who raised three through six that took the Smarter Balance assessment. We're going to move now to this essential indicator. This indicator is assigned based on the percentage of students who were suspended one or more times during a school year. These are the performance levels for the suspension indicator, and once again, we want to see a low or very low performance in this area. This slide includes the all student performance level, which was very low, and also the performance levels for the student groups. This indicator also includes all students kindergarten through sixth grade. Our African-American student group performed at the medium level. When we looked at the data for this student group, we found that it was a group of forty-seven students, and one of these students was suspended. As we have seen in the past, small, we can see significant fluctuations when we have small student groups. And this is, I think this is an example of that.
Vivian, real quick, is that based on like a percentage or something? Is that why?
Right, so, yes, it is based on.
So it's like one out of forty-seven?
Mm-hmm, exactly. So if you look here, the performance levels are based on the percentage of students in that group that you have suspended. All right. We're going to shift now to the English Learner Progress Indicator, or OBE. The OBE looks at how students perform on the Summit of English Learner Proficiency Assessment for California or Health Act. This is the annual assessment that's given to all of our English learners to determine their progress in acquiring English. It is calculated by, it is calculated by adding the number of students who advanced one level one level on the Health Act. Sorry. Sorry. It is calculated by adding the number of students who advanced one level to the number of English learners who maintain the level four. Level four is the goal for all students on the Health Act. This number is divided by the total number of students who took the Health Act. And our students' health and performance level, performance level is considered high, this sixty-one percent considered to have any progress towards English language proficiency.
Your slide.
My, your slide, Anna. Thank you. The OBE was the final dashboard component. Next year, we'll have two years worth of data. So in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we will see the multiple color performances of return to the dashboard. And so right here includes the report of the California School Dashboard.
Thank you, Vivian.
I have a couple. So the mathematics, you were talking, saying there were eighty-eight students that were not performing, and forty of those were, you know, like.
English learners.
Or English learners, I'm sorry. I, the, how many of those are like in sixth grade? Because are we seeing a decrease as we're going through, you know, fourth through sixth?
Yes, this was actually something, I'm glad you asked this question, because I think you asked the same question when I was reviewing the past results. And I went, we should have answered that correctly. So you might remember I shared a graph that showed third grade compared to sixth grade. And in that graph, if we actually calculated the percentages that were on that, the third graders in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, we had forty-eight students that were level one. And as sixth graders in twenty twenty-two, that number was reduced, sorry, in the area of mathematics. Let me change that over to just essentially math. So in math, it was thirty-eight third graders, reduced down to twenty-eight students by the time they were in sixth grade. And English Language Arts, it was forty-eight students, reduced to twenty-four students.
And then in the chronic absenteeism, I mean, we got a lot of the socially, socioeconomically disadvantaged students that are missing a lot of school. What are we doing to reduce that?
So those are, that is.
I know it's difficult.
It is, and I think it's also something that each of our principals is really thinking about. How do we first communicate to our families that attendance is very important? And then also how to ensure that we're providing motivation for students to be here. I think also right now, we're still going through a transitionary period from pandemic, and so the absentee, absenteeism rates are affected by that as well.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm just curious what interventions we have in place to support those families that are having trouble getting to schools and new students to school.
Again, I think that's, you need to each school side. One of the pieces we do have is just communication. So there is communication. There are letters that go home to families, helping them helping them to understand how important attendance is when they are, when they have a certain number of absences. And then I, the school sites also can provide support. So it's conversations with families, what's, what's causing the absences to occur? So that there can be supports put into place when it is outside of the list, which right now, I think that's still a component of what we're seeing in terms of absences.
How do you need home visits, for example?
Again, as Vivian mentioned, that may be site dependent, and certainly when we see repetitive absences, often our district nurses are very involved to find out why there is repeated illness being reported. Our health techs also reach out, and certainly if a home visit is necessitated, our, our staff would certainly take that step. As Vivian has shared, and as we know, our absentee rates, we were still mandated by the state for students to stay home a required number of days if COVID was involved. So just as we see trends, certain populations were more affected than others, certain student groups. We hope to see that and expect to see that turn around over the course of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
This is compared with previous years prior to COVID.
That's a good question. I don't have that data right in front of me. I can share with you that from a state perspective, their attendance rate for all students was over thirty percent. But it is certainly information we can get to in terms of comparing it to the twenty nineteen data versus the twenty seventeen data.
This reminded me of an article that I saw that, I think, five of our schools, just California distinguished schools. Is this some of the information that is, goes into that calculation?
There are elements, yes, there is an analysis that is California School Dashboard, and it is how, it is how schools were selected to, sorry, I'm running.
Yeah, so I don't know if you all can see or saw that, but five of our schools out of eight, out of eight, because, out of eight, because this guy wasn't, wasn't eligible yet at the time. So literally five out of our eight schools are California distinguished schools, which in the county was like, there's only twenty-one. So we have five of the twenty-one distinguished schools, so I thought that was incredible. And it's kind of reflected in, so. Thank you very much, Vivian, I think that's.
Thanks so much.
Do you want to go? Okay. So can we go, we can go back to your vote?
Okay.
So apologies, but I think that's, I understand, I think Heather wanted to just, when she voted no on the consent items, she wanted to vote no on that one particular consent item. So when we did it, we did it all. So, so I think that we can go back and do we?
You can read it, I'm going to consent to pull that one item out, go to consent again, and then pull on that one item.
Okay, so we'll just pull, yeah, so we'll pull that one for you. Okay. So let's do it that way, let's see. So can I have a motion on the consent items, pulling, taking out six points?
No, not six, one, which, which number is it, one, six point one one, sorry.
Six point one one, so essentially six point one through six point one zero, and then also six point one two, two.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to approve the consent, all the consent items except six point one one.
Great, zero seven. All right, and all those in paper?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to approve six point one one.
I'll stand.
All those in paper that?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
And the motion passes? Okay. Let's see, we're at that.
Eight point one.
We're at eight point one, okay, thank you very much. Eight point one, Board of Representatives for Data Planning Process Update with Dr. Rickler.
Good evening again. I'm pleased to present to you an update about our strategic process that is underway and about to get even more underway as we involve members from other community in upcoming meetings. And we do quite a bit of communication with everybody throughout our district about what's about to occur next. So this evening, I'll talk about, very briefly revisit the fact that this is one of our priority actions, a key priority action in our current strategic plan for this year. I'll review the summary of the phases that I actually did quite a bit of overview on at the October meeting. I'll touch on that again. And then we're currently entering phase two in vision, and so I'll talk more specifically in detail about that, please. This evening, I'll share the process timeline and then our communication and outreach. Again, the board's, the board's priority and district priority has been to have this be a collaborative process that is inclusive with an understanding that we all want to achieve some common long-range goals to realize our vision. This is the priority action, and we'll read through all of it, but you can see here as you're looking through the priority action, we're making good progress on this with selecting our consultants, determining ways to involve all, and all of our educational partners. I'll talk about that fair call up even more tonight about relevant surveys and ways to inform our priorities, articulating a long-range multi-year plan, which will happen before the end of this school year. And then I'll reach out to partners in the development of this next phase in our strategic planning. So I talked about this in October, but we, and I do want to touch on what each of these phases is this year or that we're going through. We have just been wrapping up this first phase of preparation where we're engaging our community and really thinking about. We have just been wrapping up this first phase of preparation where we're engaging our community and really thinking about how we can engage our community, excuse me, and helping the voices of our teachers, of our students, and also of our community. We're talking, having conversations around expectations and conditions for success and thinking about who these internal and external partners are that we are, hope to engage with as we work through this process. And so as we then move into the phase that we're in now, this actually guides the development of our Portrait of a Learner. So I will talk about that more in detail in just a moment. But we really do want to have this sustained community conversation where we have shared agreement and, you know, about what these priorities are and where we own this picture together about what our Portrait of a Learner is. So it will be exciting to have ongoing opportunities for our community to be involved in this phase, and I will share more about that in just a moment. The third phase that we will go into after that is when we inquire, and I'm sure that Tell for Kids, who's a consultant that works for us, goes into actually a current state analysis support with us. So they actually look and gather some of our data, our achievement data, attendance data, existing focus group data, survey finding, whatever, all of those pieces are. And they'll be able to then help us through this inquiry phase. But then moves into the fourth phase, which is design, where we again inform and include key stakeholders in taking from, you know, this idea, this input that we've gotten from our community partners, everybody who's wanting to be involved in helping them turn that from ideas into actual action to operationalize those ideas so that it becomes an actual plan that is written, articulated. And then moves into the launch phase, we're moving forward, that's where we talk about, and involve everybody in how do we lead in, manage this change, and have systemic coherence, just as we have over the last five years and achieved so much. Moving forward with a brand new set of ideas and ideal actions that we set forward. And then an important part that the board has really emphasized is how do we measure our success and our progress along the way? How do we have those status checks and different ways to measure our progress? So as I said, I'll share a little bit more about the phase that we're going into right now. This is an outline of this envisioned phase. We will be having four meetings within about the next week. We'll be sending out communication to all of our community about this phase because anybody who can and would like to be a part of this, we welcome and encourage participating in this. You can see here an outline of what's going to happen in each of these meetings. The meetings do build upon one another. So we are hopeful that we will have people who will like to and commit to, be able to commit to attending those because that would be an important part of the conversation as they do build upon them. So the first meeting, overview of the process and discussion of those overarching questions that will guide the work and an in-depth examination of, you know, why does, why do we need to change? What's going to happen next? What are the shifts happening in the greater world and in education and in our district? And where are we right now? Then we move into meeting two, and you can see then we'll use the information from meeting one. And Mattel will guide through, and some of you have talked about Colin Lewis, who will be our facilitator. He'll lead those discussions with us as we address these competencies that we started to identify, that we hope that our students gain and intend that our students have as they work through our system through sixth grade, and start to prioritize these for our local context and what it means in our district. As we then move into stage three, where we come to some kind of convergence of what that Portrait of a Learner is going to look like. What does it look like to experience school in our system from kindergarten through sixth grade? And what will that learner look like as he, she exits sixth grade? And sort of start to come up with that particular idea and more specificity around the Portrait of a Learner. Then we've got work to do between three and four because we come back to four with an actual draft of the Portrait of a Learner where that group that has been a part of that whole process will weigh in on that. We'll be able to share the district and the other community feedback that we've received because we'll be getting community feedback between three and four as well. Incorporate that into actually the actual Portrait of a Learner as we move forward. So after each of these meetings, it is our goal, and we will be communicating out to our greater public about what has happened in the previous meeting. Because we realized not everybody can be there, and they're going to want to know what's going in and going on. We want to be able to give them opportunity to be a part of it in that way. So this is the process timeline. You can see February is going to be a big month because we kick off the first big meeting where everybody gets to come together. So we will be sending that out. We've got the letter very close, as far as being ready to email to everybody. I'll talk about our outreach in just a moment. But these are the meeting dates that you can see, and some important things will happen before we actually have the meeting day, including we're going to be sending out a survey about getting some initial ideas about priorities. And then you can see then just being the portrait and the design team will have more surveys. And then as we move through the process, we will think about how we can measure our actual progress after we put the plan in motion and start actually doing the work. And so I will actually skip to, or I will actually focus in and hopefully this will go right to the webpage. There we go. We've got information about our strategic planning process on our website. You can see here, we've got an overview, the process timeline, dates are on here. We've got a quick video if people want to hear it. It's me giving a quick, about sixty seconds overview and inviting people to be a part of the process. And that we do want it to be all-inclusive of these different stakeholder groups. So as you look over here on the left-hand side, you can see the different phases of the, or some of the big components of the process. The one that we're, that we're actually entering and talking about right now is the strategic plan Portrait of a Learner. So we can see here what the design team is going to be doing. Again, the dates that hopefully people will be able to commit to. Very soon, we're going to have on here where people can RSVP too. So we're going to make that as simple as possible so people know, how do I tell them I want to be there? We want to be able to anticipate so that they can be, you know, it's over dinner or over, you know, dinner time. We want to have something to, a little bit of nourishment, make sure we have enough room for everybody as well. So that's exciting. And then the next phase, actually, as we put our ideas into action, we'll populate this more with our strategic plan articulation. And then as we get additional FAQs, or additional questions throughout the process, we can continue to update FAQs. One thing that will be great, I think, for the community will be on the strategic plan page, Portrait of a Learner. As we have each of these meetings, we'll be able to report back on after each one, what happened at the meeting. So we'll include that here. We'll talk about what we think that, what's the best way to do that is a, is it, we'll have to figure that out. Because I think to have real authentic parts to that will be important. Now I'm going to go back to, where's the, thank you, snap, I need to get out of our website now. Back to, but thank you. So I mentioned surveys. We're very pleased to be reaching out about the various ways to get, to get the voices in the room of our staff, of our parents, of our community. And so Mattel for Kids is helping us to design a survey right now. We want to be able to send out a survey ahead of time that will get input on our priorities. We're also looking at and have reached out to UCSD about, to get some, to get some information and hope to partner with them on developing culture and strategic planning. They've done a lot of work and worked alongside districts with that kind of survey. I know Catherine, we've talked about that as well. And so we are meeting with them, giving information with them about how could we possibly partner with them. The exciting thing is we partnered with UCSD as we went through COVID. And they actually did some research in our district and did some surveying of our, I think it was our staff, right? I mean, on more than one occasion as we did work through COVID. So it's a really wonderful way to work alongside a university and they've been good partners with us. So I think we have a very interest in doing that as soon as possible and seeing how do we have this culture that really supports the success and well-being of our students and our staff as we move through the strategic planning process. For sure, we know following the Portrait of a Learner, there will be a survey to our stakeholders based on what we've developed as in Portrait of a Learner and prior to us actually articulating it in a plan. And then of course, as the board has talked about, we prioritize how do we measure success and do that in an ongoing way. I'm hopeful that this, that a partnership with UCSD will actually lend itself to that phase as well. Our community correspondence I talked about, so we're inviting all members of our community. We will be doing a press release as well at the same time as we send an invitation out to our community because it's not only an invitation to people who have children in our community or in our schools, it's an invitation to the entire community. So we hope that there will be a lot of enthusiasm and interest in participating in this very important outreach process and making sure we have the right plan in place to guide our work. And I'm excited about the next several years that will follow this planning process.
Thank you so much, Dr. Reckler. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you. This is really coming together. It's nice to see everybody kind of jelling all the parts of the process and how it's all going to work. So thank you. I like to see the beginning of the website, getting up there, so people can know where to look and make use to it. So I think that is all great. And I also appreciate that it's inclusive and including lots of different groups. And I'm thinking that the portion that would be part of this thing not coming out is clearly for people who may be interested in that first, the Portrait of the Learner process, the one and four meetings, is that effectively what we're asking for is to put like a big task force, right? Anybody wants to be in the task force, can be in the task force. But people who are willing to commit to coming for all four meetings, you know, barring conflicts, things that come up, obviously, but with the intent that if you're going to come into this process, you're going to come to all four meetings, or if you can come to any meeting you want to. It would be nice to position it on the website, almost call it a task force, or I don't know, just so that people who, we'll get a critical mass, I guess, of people who have the continuity across the four meetings. Because I think it would be more complicated for people to drop in and what. And if we don't explain that, it might seem like, oh, you can just come to any one of, like, pick one of the four meetings. I could see how easy it would be to, like, take that away from all those dates. And so I think if we're very clear that they don't need each other, spell it out, that anyone's welcome to be involved, that'd be great. And then also, I like the idea of RSVP link and you can have indicate, you know, do they have a school affiliation? Are they a parent or a teacher or kid? Are many kids to come? That's great, too. So whatever their affiliation is, maybe you can identify if they're at the house. Like, if you don't get enough non-parent community members, then we might have reached out more directly to different community groups that might be interested. Press release is great, that everybody uses paper. So then there's also just one of the other vehicles. I, you know, I don't know if it was in a postcard in everybody's house necessarily. Like, it's a really expensive and involved endeavor, but there could be, you know, can you play any wars? And there's different organizations, or even, it's the Damar is a local government inside of our district. So just reaching out to, what we can think of, to invite participation and just, especially for missing participation once we see the sign-ups, then making sure we're filling in this gap so that we, while being inclusive, also try to make sure we have everybody in the room. So it'd be my suggestion, but I think it's looking great and really fun.
Okay. So I was wondering, in addition to the learner profiles, do we have any other profiles, like educator profiles or like the school system profiles?
It'll be interesting to see what comes out of this process because that has been mentioned and it has come up. So it would be something that we would look at to see, does that get developed alongside the learner profiles as we move forward and have an actual strategic plan?
And then I do understand it's nice to have a task force. I just think that we want to keep it open to as many people and as many voices as possible. And, you know, in effect saying, okay, if you can't make all four of these meetings, we don't hear participation. I would, you know, tend to lean towards the other side where please come. And also on the website, like on the main page where you're talking about just strategic plan and general line to go into the learner profile, I would definitely have opportunities for anyone and everyone, students, parents, community members, to share their input right there and then. As far as surveys, it sounds like it's phase three that you're really going to be analyzing that data in the inquiry phase. And so, you know, I know it's been said time and time again by the staff how much they want to be surveyed.
Yeah, no, we're actually, maybe I'm misspoke, I'm sorry. No, we're actually intending to survey sooner rather than later.
No, yeah. We're trying to, yeah. Because you're going to be having that data in phase three. So I'm just, you know, there is that survey that's out there, it's ready, it's, I don't know if all the questions are, or, I mean, the one that I've mentioned to you that is in line with the California Healthy Kids Survey is the California Staff.
It's California School Climate Health and Learning Survey and we actually, yes, thank you for bringing that up. Because we did, we actually have been in contact with the San Diego County Office of Education about administering that survey as well.
I think that would be so useful to have that information going into the inquiry phase. And even if it doesn't check all the boxes of what the staff is wanting to be surveyed on, at least it's going to give you a stepping stone platform to go, and then, you know, you work and create, you know, additional questions to add to that.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up earlier, Catherine, because we did follow up on that.
It's already out there, you don't have to recreate it. There's all kinds of families and for parents.
Yes. The good thing is we now, now that we've been looking into this, what are some of the best tools? What are the partnerships that's one? And it looks as if there are multiple ways and multiple good surveys that we can...
I think a survey takes time, so.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you for bringing that up before and reiterating that to me.
I forgot to suggest childcare for these meetings because it's kind of five thirty, seven thirty timeframe if you're coming from five to seven, and that's just so brutal. You don't have to look at, is there a way we can provide childcare?
We actually looked at that and we're really, I mean, Shirley, I know you looked into it, and it is a staffing issue.
It is a staffing issue. We have such an incredible shortage of our after-school program staff already just to accommodate students and families up to the six o'clock timeframe. And many of those staff, our after-school program staff are students, and so they arrange their schedules accordingly so some have evening classes. And it's all voluntary on their part, they do want to pick up some extra hours. And as we have pursued those events and asked those staff members, we have very limited interest in doing so. Unfortunately, it's just continues to be a battle for that particular program.
Are all, these are all in-person? Is that virtual opportunity?
Actually, meeting number four is virtual. The one, two, and three are in-person.
Yeah, I think, I think just having that hybrid model is going to give you more responses and more data to use.
We're definitely incorporating, as the board's talked about, various ways for people to get input throughout the process. And I feel really good about some of the, all of the wheels that are in motion to make that happen.
I definitely have an echo of what everything they're, they're both saying, and so what Erica and how, ways to try to incorporate more. And I would just say that the community would, that this is really important and it's a chance for you to share your thoughts on what this, how you want to load this school district. It's an option for the community to be a part of that. And so take part, participate. It's, it'll make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And we are at nine point one, word reports on the facilities update.
Good evening, President Locke, members of the Board and Dr. Reckler. This month's facilities update will actually be pretty quick. Sorry, Pacific Sky School, we are really at the tail end closing on the sign-off. We will likely have, I know it's completion coming to the board in the next month or two. There are just little pieces of, you know, paperwork here and a minor there in wrapping it up. We are in great shape and looking forward to doing that final work. So not a lot to lay to report, Pacific Sky. Delmar High School rebuild, as you know, we have been enjoying for months now. We do have some glimmers of light in the fact that the California State Supreme Court has denied review of the appeal for the initial lawsuit. for the initial lawsuit, lawsuit number one that was against the district. And as you'll remember, that court of appeal ruling stated the district had complied with CEQA, that we have a single CEQA document. So by the Supreme Court denying review, that ends that case. So that suit is over. We have complied with CEQA and that is the end of it. We do have a hearing on February 3rd. As you know, we've continued a couple of times, the judge called in Superior Court. The fortunate thing in this is that much of the arguments on the other side here has been that we had two CEQA documents that hadn't complied with CEQA, and therefore the city couldn't give us our permits, which is now contradicted and the court has found. And the court revealed that we complied with CEQA. So we have some strength there. We're looking forward to our opportunity on the 3rd to argue this. And we are hoping to, in the injunction, be able to look forward as soon as we can after that. And we are working and having conversations to make sure that we're ready and prepared to go as soon as we are able to. And so that is my facilities update this month. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
And we'll be on to Delmar Hills Academy Modernization. And so for our, decided we're going to provide another update on our Delmar Hills Academy Modernization. And tonight I will go over the proposed improvements that are part of the current modernization plan. Then I'll briefly cover the community engagement processes that we went through with this project and the structural rehabilitation review that was conducted and its impact. So in looking at the proposed improvements, we are bringing this to make it very clear and bring to the front of this presentation. So for this proposal, this is the site map. Looking at it, much of the work, almost all, is aimed at the building itself. We would be modernizing all of the classrooms, including kindergarten rooms, which would be resituated, would include restrooms. The front office would have improvements and reconfiguration today for better flow and better use of space. We would include ADA accessibility from mango garage to the front of the school. And then some reconfiguration of the fronts and improvements to the visibility of the front of the school. There'd also be some marketing drive, reconfiguration to bring up the code in this area. And finally, the budget would continue to be an overall budget of $20 million for construction that costs at $14.8 million. And looking more closely at this, this new, the plan that we have brought forward, we have here are our kindergarten rooms, so we would be moving them. This used to be art. It would move this space to expand a little bit into the outdoor room, create restrooms, both interior and exterior facing ones, so that there's restroom for our kindergarten students from the outside. It would create a smaller space here, and then we would be modernizing all of our classrooms. Our front office space would be, again, improved and modernized. We also heard throughout about path of travel, and anybody who's spent time at Delmar Hills knows that if you are going to the classrooms up here or over here, the ability to get you to the front office means you have to go outside to the classrooms. It also means that if you're newer to the school or you have students who are younger, finding their way, you can deal with it tougher. And so there was a lot of talk about how do we improve path of travel. So path of travel is improved. And in doing that, we also are able to create collaboration spaces that mirror the approach that we've taken with Pacific Sky School and with the Facility Master Plan in trying to build collaboration spaces in a primary and upper grade area. And then in addition, in the center, we will have an innovation space similar to what we have now, but then more dedicated art and science. So a nice large science theme plus space, a nice large arts theme plus space, which makes for a innovation space similar to what we have at Pacific Sky School, similar to what we talked about with the Facility Master Plan. And doing that in a manner that while we can't do, in this plan, we're not doing a full rebuild, we are able to hit on those focuses that we have to make improvements so that this school is seeing the pedagogical approach that we're having and then impacting that through an environment like it's shaped. So just to also sort of bring this and try to tie together the, some of the visuals that we had last month. Again, a new front door. Again, there'd be ADA access that will bring us down to the front of the school. This would then also create steps down, so it would be a little more attractive, a little bit easier to get down instead of the really steep slope we have going into the school. So a bit of seating and really making it a more attractive feature to enter the school. If you're new to the school, you know exactly where you're supposed to go, giving that front. And then looking at our interior spaces, we'd be reconfiguring our front office space. It would still be a front office entrance, similar. We have access to the school, still have our principal in that area and our conference, but making it a little bit more useful and usable. As we look at the bottom right, this is the Innovation Center. Again, in the center, have a nice access to the outside. We haven't completely configured the walls and the casework. We'd be looking at some level of casework, some break between the path of travel, the ability to have technology at our other Innovation Centers. And decentralized library. We'll have library books in this area, and then we have library books that would be decentralized so that they'd be accessed in the other areas throughout the school. And then look up here at the top left, we have, this is the art room, all of the art and science, but it's somewhat similar. Again, great access to the center outdoor area of the school, the commons area, redoing it so we had casework and the ability to conduct those classes, flexible furnishing. And then this is a rendering of what that collaboration space could look like. So again, two collaboration spaces, a primary and an upper, providing access that we can have students from a couple of different classes or we can have, where students can now have to acquire their time, giving that flexibility to have two spaces for our students in alignment with the other work that we're building out of their school sets. And then again, as we went through this process, we did go through community engagement where we went out and opened it up to all community members who wanted to attend. We had four meetings. At our last meeting, we did have community input. We gathered that in. We heard good feedback on some of the steps we'd taken and the ability to make some improvements to the school despite some of the constraints that we were facing. We've kind of opened up the staff multiple times. We've actually had student input sessions. Great opportunities for students to, again, use the VR and give us input and talk about how it might look from their perspective. And then just to quickly touch on the structural rehabilitation. As you know, we had to go through, it being a 1970s construction, site rehabilitation was triggered. And we went through a pretty much, a pretty long DSA review process that was necessary. It's also why this has taken a longer time to go through the process. It has increased costs for the modernization, and that's why the measured in its scope has been reduced to really be the building itself. However, we are also then looking at funding from other funding sources to make sure that we are able to do playground improvements through restricted maintenance. So as we look at it, every year, we have money that we spend to improve, maintain pieces. Playgrounds can come from that, fields can come from that. So that allowed us to think about how do we do the interior of the school, use that with measurement, keep it in the budget so that we have the ability to also make an impact at all of the other schools that we need to make an impact at the other six schools, while also being able to make sure that the improvements that needed to happen to playgrounds and fields would be able to take place over time. So that, if you have any questions.
I just have a question about the ADA room going in. Because there's going to be the stairs coming down. Just can you give me a sense of?
Yeah, so if you look up here, the ADA room would likely start in the bus loop. And then it would have a slow gradient come down and a little switch back where we have our current route. And then we'd come back across, and a little landing on the stairs that go down to the kindergarten area. That would be a landing. We'd have to go past that and then switch back again and then switch back down. The reason being that as we go through PSA now, our current ADA path of travel from the street to the school level goes behind the PAC. That won't pass muster on this modernization of the whole school because you need to have a path of travel from the street to the front of the school.
Where will it?
And so it would get into the front of the school.
At the doors.
Correct. Yeah, sort of that, that regular path that we have in front of the school.
Thanks. Another question.
Still, you transitioned point two more fruitful to utilize CMAS number 423121015 to purchase playground equipment.
So CMAS is a group that develops a whole number of contracts that you can use to piggyback to purchase goods and sometimes services. In this case, the playgrounds that we have designed, we've bought from a certain vendor. The contract deal that we've used in the past, we no longer use, it's expired. And so this is a new contract that will allow us to purchase playground equipment so that we can move forward with playgrounds and through our school sites this summer.
It's just piggybacking.
So it's a piggyback. It's been competitively bid, and that allows then multiple districts, rather than having to go through the full competitive bid process, write up big documents, spend all the time with staff. And then when you're doing it at a large scale like this, you typically get good pricing because they know that a lot of districts will use it. Rather than if you're a smaller district and you're doing a smaller bid, you may not get as good bid coverage. You might not get as good pricing. So in this case, a piggyback makes a lot of sense.
How will the playgrounds compare to the Pacific Sky playgrounds?
That's the standard.
Pacific Sky, I think, Sycamore Ridge, now with their new playgrounds, they're going to be modeled after that. So we've gotten great feedback. We'll have the fast slides that the kids like. We're making sure that we're including swings. We've gotten a lot of feedback from kids who've gone through it. And I'm excited to just be able to expand it to more versatile sites. In fact, as we've gone out and then focused groups and talked with our parents, we've had parents saying, so when is our school getting done? And excited about us being able to do that. So we're excited to be able to bring some more playground updates out this summer.
And the piggybacking, is it piggybacking on the type of equipment or is it piggybacking to the vendor?
So it is, the term piggyback, it means that we are piggybacking on, we're using a contract that has already been bid out. And so it's gone through the competitive bid process, and we are therefore using it because it is allowable to, with board approval, use the same contract, the same bid process to purchase those.
So are we confined to what that contract purchased or are we confined to?
Well, we already know what we want to purchase because we have, we have playgrounds that we've designed that we are built off of what we put at Sycamore Ridge, the things we've gotten out of Pacific Sky, what we put in at Ashley Falls this year. So we wanted a purchasing vehicle that would allow us to buy the equipment that we know we want at our schools.
Is it the same method that we'll install everything?
So we'll have to build out the install because this allows us to purchase the equipment, but then you still have to bid out installations. That's a separate case. So we'll be bringing back, and we'll be looking at now where we're asking you to approve and ratify so that we can purchase these, and then we'll be going out to get to bid for the installation.
Again, replicate that rope dome structure over there.
Erica really likes it.
It's actually the same bedroom we have at Sycamore Ridge and Ashley Falls. It won't look exactly like Pacific Sky. But I can say that I have not had complaints from, and I've had a lot of excitement about Ashley Falls, Sycamore Ridge, and common of them.
Are these the three glass pools or is it, I think, the pool is happening like Delmar Heights?
We have Oceanian, Torrey Hills, St. John's Canyon, and then we will still need to do Delmar Hills. Part of the reason we are waiting at Delmar Hills is there's a potential for conflict with, when our contractor comes on site, we don't want to mess up the new playgrounds. So we will be putting in new playgrounds, but we don't want to do it before there's potential that they need to lay down material on some of our fields. And so they will likely be driving right by what would potentially be a brand new playground. So we have had conversations with them, and we think it's a better approach to wait because we've worked with them.
Yeah, so, and are these going to be done during the summer?
Yes.
Fantastic. So it's very good, hopefully, after approval, after approval, and we can use that to create even nicer playgrounds.
And we'll be using measurement funds, so it's a nice use of our bond dollars to support our community and our students.
All right, is there?
I just want to make sure that we will have enough money in our budget for the Delmar Hills playground. Once we get around to it, we'll be able to give them a comparable playground to the one.
Yes, and we'll prioritize using, again, other fund sources like the restricted maintenance that we haven't budgeted for yet because it'll be in and out here. But we will, we know that we need to replace them, and we will replace those. Those, and there will need to be, we've done part of the field, we'll need to do the other part of the field. We need to wait on that, too, because if we're going to drive trucks on the other part of the field and lay down equipment or materials, it doesn't make sense to finish the other half of the field a lot prior to that.
I'll move in, Rick.
Great.
One second.
All right. Hi, and so let's motion to approve this purchase playground equipment is passed. Thank you. And then to close, that brings us to closing point, so. Twelve point one, or review reminder about DMSD events. Twelve point two, or review reminder of the current district DMSD and PTA events. And then primary items, anybody have items for the February fourth meeting?
Sure. If we could just get some kind of overall sense facility-wise, how many of our classrooms are transitional kindergarten ready? What this will be like? And then how many we would need if we were required to implement full transitional kindergarten?
And there was the.
Is that something you're asking for? This is a huge undertaking, like a facility study. Unless it's a strategic direction.
To say that we need reclasses doesn't really mean an accurate picture.
And I think we've been asking for this for a long time. We haven't gotten it. We've had reports on teaching, but never gotten the facilities, how many classrooms are ready? I haven't seen that.
Probably within the $40 million range.
Well, how many do we have that are ready? And then how many more would we need to add?
Are you looking at school by school breakdown? I don't know. Because I thought we did see something, but it's not the.
There was a report.
Yeah, that we needed.
So I mean, I don't have an issue bringing it back if you want to see that, but I think we've already had that.
Could we just recirculate the same, the report to the, to the board if Catherine doesn't remember it, so we don't have made it to be presented?
Why don't we take a look at that report, and to the extent that it doesn't specify how many we need and how many we have, maybe just add those two criteria to the existing report, and that will be some of the burden.
Do we need that as a, as an item to be brought back for an asking, or is that something that?
If I don't want to do a full one.
Yeah, because I don't, yeah, I don't know that we need that necessarily.
No, I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking for facilities information.
And to be followed by that to this.
You mean something like the.
Certain circular information.
Yeah, okay. How about, could we just have?
I prefer it to be made public, and if it's just sent to us, it's not made public.
The thing is, I thought that was.
It's the public information that we received.
We already. I suspect we already kind of received the information, it's an issue.
I don't think we did.
We had an open meeting with that report.
Right, but I don't think that's, that the information was included in that report.
Chris, is there additional information that you could provide that Catherine's asking about right now that we? What would you be able to offer? Or if you haven't offered it already?
To be honest, I'd have to review what exactly we shared in the last one. But what I'm hearing is classrooms that are CK ready. I mean, when we looked at the district-wide, most of our kindergarten classrooms are used. And so part of what we realized in looking at that is that we have very few rooms that could serve as a CK room currently in the district.
Yeah, so if we could get a quick report, this is what I'm asking for. What I'm putting on as a legitimate item, which, how many classrooms are available right now for that? Could be utilized for that process? And how many would we need?
What you really, what you're really wanting is just the number of TKs or number of kindergartens we have, double that, add TK, and then how many kindergarten classrooms do we have? And then there's this difference, right? So.
So I can simplify this right now by saying, are there any kindergarten classrooms that are available?
Yeah, well.
So we can come back and include what we think might be timely in maybe the facilities report because we have, I think you're referring to the, when Chris goes to all of the spaces in the district and how many classrooms and we, as we were looking at how many portables and that kind of thing. So we can look at that again, and then we can revisit. and then we can revisit that information that we've shared during the first facility report. Does that sound good, Chris? I'm not sure what that, you know, access to information we have. I hear that the board also talking about not creating necessarily new documents, et cetera. So we can look at what we've been shared, what's been shared and determine how.
I think that this could be kind of just reshared, this information.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't remember who were that specific in the last report. I remember asking for it and I just, and perhaps I'm wrong and there is that specific breakdown, but if not, I would like to see it. So.
We'll take a look, we'll look, we absolutely have what's been shared. We'll, we'll look at what's been shared and then determine what seems timely and appropriate to sharing this.
Okay, I think that's, I'm okay with that. All right, and then we'll move to the adjournment meeting.
Move to adjourn. One second. On favor.
Thank you.
Our meeting is adjourned at eight oh four. Thank you.